We had a pre-council meeting tonight and Mr. Tim Flaherty was here from the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities and gave us an update on what's going on in the legislature and the different things that affect the city of Winona. I asked him if he'd take a couple of minutes here and give a brief update to those people that are listening here tonight. So, Tim, if you would.
Sure. Ooh, shocked there. Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Tim Flaherty. I am here representing the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, which is an organization of eighty-eight cities across Greater Minnesota, and I think Winona was one of the founding members many, many years ago. We have eighty-eight cities. I'm happy to be here. I want to give you a little update on the local government aid issue and then also on the priorities for the 2016 session. So, and we have a couple of packets, which I think you have, which I'm going to start with local government aid. And local government aid, the city of Winona gets about, well, gets nine million eight-hundred-and-some-thousand dollars for. The Coalition had a proposal this last year to increase the LGA funding at the state by forty-five million dollars. Now, that would have meant that the city of Winona would have had about a hundred and forty-four thousand dollar increase for 2016 and about another three hundred thousand for 2017. Now, our proposal was adopted by the Senate in the last legislative session. The House went a different direction and cut eighty-four million dollars out of the program. So those two approaches were in the Tax Conference Committee, and the legislature failed to pass a tax bill. And it's very, very seldom that the legislature doesn't pass a tax bill. But they did not pass one. We're hoping they pass one next year. But I want to just make a couple of comments about the local government aid. It's a critical program for Greater Minnesota cities like Winona, and I don't know many of the cities. It's either thirty, forty, fifty percent of their budgets. And it helps those cities provide many services in the city: police, fire, public works, parks, libraries. And they can provide those services without having it be property taxes. To show you how important it is to a city like Winona, your tax rate would jump from a city tax rate would jump from thirty, let's see, thirty-six percent tax rate up to ninety-two percent. What that means for like a median-valued home or median-value business, it means that your city taxes would triple. So that's how important it is to you. Now, your alternative, of course, would be to slash services, but I don't think the public would probably want that either. So this local aid program is very important. What the House Republicans did was cut eighty-four million dollars out of the program. At a time when they have a two-billion-dollar surplus, they had a two-billion-dollar surplus. And those cuts were focused on Minneapolis, St. Paul, and Duluth, and then cities like Winona and the rest of the cities in the state were just frozen, again, when you had a two-billion-dollar surplus. So we are respectfully asking the House Republicans to change their position and support the Senate position, support the forty-five-million-dollar increase in local government aid. And we think this is a very reasonable request. They have another billion-dollar surplus this year. We think they should, can, and should fund this. Now, why is it so important? Well, it's so important because the House Republican approach is really a serious threat to the long-term health of the program. If you have a big surplus and you don't increase local aid, we know it gets cut. We know, many of you were on the council, when we had the shortage, the budget shortfall at the state, where's the first place they go? They go to cut the aid to the cities. And so if you never increase it and you're only going to cut it when there's deficits and there will be more deficits, that's really spelling the end of the program. It's just unacceptable. It's the bedrock of Greater Minnesota communities. They need to fund local government aid. They need to fund an increase, and they have to move away from arbitrary cuts. Clearly, a political basis for it. They have to move away from that. They can't just cut Minneapolis, St. Paul, and Duluth. What happens when the Democrats get back in power? Are they just going to say, oh, what cities have Republicans in them, we'll just cut them? That is not the way to run a good policy-oriented program like LGA. So we're asking them to make these changes. We hope they make these changes. And we're asking the councils and the mayors to get engaged and ask these legislators to change their position. So that's the comments on LGA. I think you'll see, again, we want them to change. They should change their position. We're hoping they do, and we will be discussing this in the public. We'll be asking you to discuss it with the public. And we're asking the newspapers to follow this and to report on it. Let me go to the legislative priorities and then I'll leave you to whatever else you have to do tonight. So for 2016, we have just five priorities. And we just talked about LGA, which is the top priority, but there's another program that the state has. It's called the Business Development Public Infrastructure Program. It's just for Greater Minnesota cities. And the city of Winona has used that grant program four times for over about one point three million dollars. And the purpose of the program is to help cities provide infrastructure, like in business parks, for industrial parks, for companies that need to expand and you need to change the streets or add capacity to your sewer system or to your wastewater treatment or whatever. These are good things. There's, in your packet, you can see all the projects that have been done since the start of the program. You can see the four projects that were done in Winona. This should be a top priority for the legislature. They have to, I mean, they're going to have roughly an eight-hundred- or billion-dollar bonding program. There's no reason they can't add fifteen million dollars for this program and help, or kind of helping them help themselves. Because obviously, if you help these businesses expand, the state's going to get more revenues, more employees, more business, more growth. Okay, workforce housing tax credit is another priority, and we do have a proposal. And we, the Senate, again, passed a workforce housing tax credit. The House did not. We're asking the House to reconsider and pass that. And that is a clear tax cut. It fits within their rubric of, we've got to have everything for tax cuts. Well, here's a very good tax cut that will attract private investment to build the workforce housing that's needed in Greater Minnesota, to allow their businesses to expand or allow cities like Winona to have their businesses expand and have housing for teachers, nurses, middle-income people. I mean, it's just, the market hasn't worked. The market has failed, and we can fix this. Broadband infrastructure, we're asking for fifty million dollars. Governor just came out last week with, when the new budget forecast was put out with, where there's one point two billion-dollar surplus that they can spend after money's taken, put it in the reserve, and he came out with a hundred-million-dollar proposal. That is a good start. But I think there's still a lot of resistance at the legislature. They won't look at the research. They won't consider the research. That's national in scope. That shows how important this is if you're going to continue to have, even retain the businesses you have, to say nothing about growing them. So we just can't keep falling behind the rest of the country in broadband, which is where Minnesota is right now, and it's falling behind because of the lack of it in Greater Minnesota. Transportation, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on. I don't think the legislature will take any serious effort to tackle that this year. If you talk to some of the legislators, they'd say, oh, they're working on it. Fine, work, work, work. And I don't think we'll see much. But what we want is for them to at least do a couple of things. Fund the corridors of commerce program, which is a program to help you with like interchanges that you might need or other things that help commerce in, it's actually a metro and non-metro program. So about half the money would come out here, but it would help in projects like Highway twenty-three, Highway fourteen. You've probably heard of some of these. It might help you put a passing lane in, help you with an intersection, whatever. So we're asking for money for that, and we're asking for twenty-five million dollars per year for, to help cities with their street, you know, overlays and pod holes and street reconstruction and all the things they have there. So that's the program for next year. We really appreciate your membership. I want to just say, Michelle has, Michelle Alexander is on the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities Board of Directors, and she speaks loudly for you, represents you well on that board in terms of putting together an agenda that will help the city move forward, like on workforce housing and, of course, on LGA. So I want to thank Michelle. I want to thank all of you for participating in the program, and I would be happy to take any questions now.
Can you come back tomorrow? I think Michelle wants to hear this one more time. Well, thank you, Tim.
Thank you very much.
I just have a comment on the east end overpass issue. Just for the public's sake, there is no action that's been requested of the city council at this time. We're still in an informational selection process, and we have some other options that we're going to be looking at and exploring on how to provide adequate access in the east end of town. So just wait, and there'll be more coming forward, and there'll be a lot more public input sessions to come as we look at this whole overall issue.
Okay, thank you. All call?
Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Councilman Thurling.
Here.
Craig.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Idon.
Here.
Borzakowski.
Here.
Double.
Here.
Under the petitions, requests, and communications, item three point one, the appointment to the Heritage Preservation Commission of Peter Shortridge. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by George. I'd just add, I know we recently appointed Peter Shortridge to the Planning Commission. In the past, there was always a representative from the Planning Commission on the Preservation Commission, but for a long time, there wasn't anybody that wanted to serve. So Peter does want to serve, so here's an opportunity to better communicate between those two commissions. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
Item three point two, appointment to the Human Rights Commission of Heidi Smith.
Moved to approve that appointment.
Second. Motion by George, seconded by Jerry. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
Item three point three, appointment to the Cable Television Commission of Scott Hanson.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion by Jerry, seconded by Michelle. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
Item three point four is a request for a stop sign on Chadfield Street at Third Street.
Moved to approve that request.
I'd second that.
Motion by George, seconded by Pam. Any discussion on this?
Just a clarification, we are introducing the ordinance, not approving it?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you. And the same for the next item. Okay. No further discussion. We'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
Item three point five is a Westfield Golf Course request for no parking along Beer Street.
Moved to approve that. Introduce the attached ordinance.
Second.
Motion by Al, seconded by Michelle. Any discussion? Hearing none. We'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
Under new business, item five point one, the Winona Senior Advocacy Grant Agreement with Winona County.
I make a motion to approve the attached agreement and authorize the mayor and city manager to execute.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by George, to authorize the mayor to sign this.
It wasn't. The verbiage was much kinder this time. There was no order involved in that, just authorization.
Al, question?
Just a question. This is the same as we've done in the past with Winona County?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any further comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
Item five point two is the Maplewood Townhomes Traffic Concerns.
I make a motion to approve the attached resolution.
Second.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by George. Comments? George?
Yeah, just, you know, I serve on the board out there, and they are seeing a difference in traffic behavior out there as far as traffic, you know, and speeds and all those things. So this also, by belief, puts in the sidewalks, correct?
Yes.
So that will be a big help as those of us that are out there that they see that.
Right. It was very obvious that day we were on there that sidewalks are going to help, I think, with safety. Michelle?
My hope would be that moving forward, when we have new subdivisions going in that we require sidewalks, I think there was a time there where we stopped asking them to put them in, but even when you go out into some of the subdivisions where there's probably less traffic, you're still seeing families walk dogs in the street. And I know that that was done maybe specifically because there wasn't road width to allow for it. But I would just say, in the future, if someone comes forward with plaque or subdividing lot, that we make that be part of the requirement.
I would add that I think the width of the sidewalk, these newer sidewalks that are so much narrower are not as good as the older sidewalks.
Well, I think they were, the newer ones are four feet and the old ones are six feet. So, yeah, I concur with that suggestion.
Any other comments? Hearing none. We'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
Item five point three is a request for sanitary sewer and water main extension on Sunnyside Lane.
I move to approve the attached resolution.
Second.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by George. Comments?
A few comments here. I see there's some residents from that area here who have some concerns about this process going forward. And I also wish to note that the agenda item indicated the attachment of a petition, and I don't have that in my particular copy of my agenda, nor did I see it on the online petition source for the city council agenda. Be that as it may, though, I think there are some concerns that residents, at least to me, have expressed about this whole process. And I think there's a need for these services in that area. Certainly, apparently, there is some sanitary sewer concerns and the issues the city needs really to go ahead and serve that area. But as people say, the devil is in the details. And I think there are some of the residents here tonight who may wish to at least briefly express their concerns to the council if that's permissible.
Well, this isn't a public hearing, but if there, is there somebody here that would like to speak on behalf of the neighbors or a couple of you with the concerns that would like to step up to the microphone, state your name and address? Let us know what those concerns are.
Angie Exey. I live at one-one-six. I'm the one that put the petition together. Half of the neighbors that would like it to go through, they live on the downhill side of the road, so they'd have to put in grinder pumps and then pump it up to the tank or the line going through, and then flow to wherever from there. There is an easement in the bottom of the valley, and that way, that gentleman on the south side of the valley would be able to also tie into that if at some time they'd like to do that, hopefully. Other than that, I'm not entirely for sure why it was stopped where it was, a lack of hosing or whatever, but that's, is as is.
What is it about this proposal that we have in front of us that, is there something you would like to see changed?
Well, the way that I had it worded in the petition was to run under one-one-six or under Sunnyside Lane, and as long as it comes in and serves the neighborhood, I don't see any way to go about it other than maybe get another petition signed for running it up the easement, or is there another way to do it?
Maybe Keith could address some of these.
Mayor and council, we looked for an easement, and there is no sanitary or utility easement down the bottom of the ditch. There is a stormwater runoff in some of the area down there, but there is no utility easement. So it'd have to be required for that, as well as it'd have to be easements required between the homes for the service lines to run all the way down to the bottom. If that was done that way, it would be more expensive than this as well. This would be the least expensive way of doing it for the project. And also, the service lines, if they ran that long from the upper homes all the way down to the bottom drainage area, I would question whether those service lines would work a long ways.
Was there a way that we would go, say, every other or every third house, that the neighbors could tie into that junction so they won't have to directional bore that far? I mean, I don't see other than tearing up the street and going from uphill side houses down.
In looking at this, we, I guess we just saw this would be the least expensive and, in our opinion, the most effective way of doing it. Also, at the same time of doing the sewer, we'd want to do the water at the same time. And in doing this as well, we'd get a new street surface at the same time, too. So it's hard, and in my mind, hard to argue against putting both the water and sewer in the street.
Michelle, you have a comment or question?
So just so I'm clear, people will not pay the assessment unless they choose to hook up.
That typically has been the council's.
Okay, no, I think that's fair. I think we've done that. I think we did that on, like, Valley View Drive and a few other places.
We've done that for lots.
There's like a few houses that need to get signed up. Okay, that's all I wanted to ask. Thanks.
And a clarification, that's for what kind of service?
The twelve thousand is for the access to water and sewer.
So if people wish to have water, they would still be required to pay the twelve thousand dollars?
It's one-time fee of twelve thousand, the access to both of them, whether you hook up to just one or the other one.
Okay.
And then you still have to put in the service line for water and sewer.
Right. I think for some, as I've been explained or told from some of the residents, the access to, should some of those properties to the lower side of Sunnyside would have to put a grinder or a pump in the septic box, their distance between the box and going up to Sunnyside would be very, very costly because they'd not only have to pay for the pipe, they'd also have to dig to install that pipe. So, I mean, it would seem to me that the best solution might be to revise this, to look at what we can do to not only serve people on the other side of Sunnyside, but also those on the lower side, and have a collection system that would go up the valley despite, you know, your contention that there's no easement for that.
Again, if there was some sort of collection system for doing that, we'd end up putting the sewer collection system in the road and a sewer collection system in the drainage in the bottom. So instead of a line on Sunnyside and maybe some of the gentleman, we'd have both of those as well as one in the bottom. We'd have three lines instead of two. And then plus the much longer service lines. It's just not efficient, it's not effective.
And the reason we're looking at this right now is because there are poor sanitary sewer lines. We have leaking sewage.
I'd have to have the property owners address that.
There are none. It stops, I believe, at the third house in or the fourth house in from. Yeah.
So one house has leaking?
But her question, her question is.
Four houses, there is none.
Oh, so you guys are just requesting this because you want sanitary sewer?
To be brought in, yes.
Oh.
Some of our lots aren't large enough to have a new system put in.
Yes.
And like mine, I'm trying to sell my home, and I don't have enough room, so I'm kind of stuck.
I get it, yes. Okay, I understand better now, thank you.
Okay.
So there are no septic systems that are failing?
None currently, no. But I mean.
But they don't meet county standards or state standards anymore, so you can't sell.
Correct.
Right.
They can't be replaced without having city services?
Right.
Okay.
Okay, is there somebody, is there anyone that would like to say something?
Hi there, I'm Keith Milton, and I go way back when it used to be the township and was working directly with Bob Bowen. And I don't have the copy with me, but there was a design made to go up below there, and then there was feeder trunks that went down water easements. So there was a way to do it. And I worked directly with him, and the reasons for that was, is because, if you're familiar with Highway fourteen, when they did the blasting, all the boulders came down. And I have rocks, the tops, that stick through the asphalt. And so he did soil borings at the time and said, not feasible because of the amount of rock that's in that area. And so then when he, talking with him, he had mentioned bringing it up on the bottom. He had a complete map drawn out, and I'm sure if you look in your records, you'll find it, because Bob wouldn't throw something like that away. And as far as, I was opposed to it then, and I'm kind of opposed to it now, and I do understand some of the reasons people want to sell their homes. And just because of the new provisions that have been set, I can understand your problem. But I can also understand that if you research it, there's other proposals that you can take. And it might cost you a little money, but then again, if I'm trying to sell a house, now I have two tanks or a system on top of a mound system. Maybe it's not as appealing, so I might have trouble selling my house. I don't have a problem. I have room to expand my service if I need to. But then again, is that fair to my neighbors? Probably not. Now, is it fair for my neighbors to have to put grinder pumps in when some people have XL Energy, other people have another power company out there? Their rates would be a lot higher to pump than others that don't. And I don't think it's quite right in the statutes in the city to have two power companies. I know you have a lawyer here, but maybe he could look into that, what the state statutes are. That's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Grace Lynn Sheeler. My husband John and I reside at one-twenty-five Sunnyside Lane. We signed the petition under the assumption that it would be run down the back of the valley, so that would serve both sides of the valley. As for the easement, that drainage easement came in when it was subdivided. Before that, there was a road that ran from Country Drive up to the farm in the back. And that road had been established for over fifty-some years. Running along that road was the power line, telephone lines. To me, they are utilities, and that made it a utility line. From my business law class at Winona State, it says an easement by dedication. When a land is subdivided, everything that was there before the division still stays as an easement. So there is an easement there if you want to do it, because what are you talking about is just a six-foot trench going through to put in the septic. There is also the drainage easements between every two houses that's going to run up and go up to the south side, up to the north side. You would split off of that. Four houses would go to one line. If we have to do the grinder pump thing, we're looking at a hundred and twenty, a hundred and fifty feet just to get down to our distribution box. Then we have to come back up to our house, go through our septic tank to hook up again. That's probably another fifty feet, plus wire it. You've got to pay for the pump, you've got to pay for the wiring, you've got to pay for the pump running. And if the power goes out, which we are in a country, part of the city, Tri-County does a very good job of coming back and getting the power going again, but where our substation is in Stockton, so that can happen any place in the county, our power goes out. But we do need, we've had, right now, there probably isn't any things failing, but there's some are getting close because there's been a number of septic systems replaced on our side and on gentleman's side already that have been replaced. So it's just a matter of time, and this has been going on since nineteen ninety-seven when we were annexed. And when they dug into Country Drive going up Sunnyside Lane and put those four houses on, you should have seen the hole they had in the ground. It was, we figure, close to thirty feet deep, and that's the low grade. You come up to our high grade, I don't know how deep you're going to have to go to go up Sunnyside Lane. And gentleman drive is even worse. And Jeterman Drive is even worse. Uh, and they had to stop, they couldn't even go up any further. The one house, Nusalki's house, is done at an angle because there was so much boulder and rock, they couldn't go up any higher. So I think it really needs to be looked at a whole different way. It may be more expensive to go up the back, but I think if you do things right this time, you won't have to come back and redo them again, like happens with people. They put in just the minimum tanks to get by and we put in an extra large one, so we aren't bothered either way. But we're thinking, hey, let's take care of everyone there. So that's all I have.
Keith, um, I'm assuming you, you want to do this next year. Would there be any reason that we have to decide tonight in order to keep it on the schedule? Could we have a, some kind of a meeting with the neighbors here and talk about some of these issues a little further? Michelle?
I'm just worried about the gentleman who's actually trying to sell his house.
Right.
Because if he, if we wait, he can't sell. I mean, he need, they need to have a plan. Do you have someone that wants to purchase your house right now?
I lost three sellers.
So what I'm saying is the longer we wait, the harder, he has to have a plan in place so the bank will give the buyer funding or he can't. Well, you, you know.
I know, believe me.
You know, we went through this. So I, I mean, it sounds to me like the only person here who, there's you and the other people who want this because you need it.
Three buyers, sorry, I misspoke. I lost three buyers due to the. Is there any way that if this was to go through, say, on the books for next year or year after, however it takes, is there any way that I could get some sort of documentation to let the bank?
Well, if we approve it, I would think you'd have all the documentation you need.
Okay.
I'm just wondering if two more weeks would make that much difference and an opportunity to discuss things. I'm kinda thinking, you know, there's some information, I guess, you know, we talked about these other options are gonna be more expensive. Well, how much more expensive? I guess I'd be interested in knowing.
And you still have to acquire easements. I, I come back to the, the plans and the survey to not show any utility easements down there.
If you went up Jeterman though, in the ditch, I mean, would that be divided between four houses then for the one section of pipe? Versus two houses uphill and downhill?
If you go down between.
If you went in the ditch, yes, between Sunnyside and Jeterman?
You, you still have to.
This needs to be accepted.
You still have to acquire easement for that.
Paul, you have a question?
Yes, a couple of, couple of things. Number one, one way you can handle on a closing is to have the twelve thousand dollars put into an escrow account so that the buyer knows that, that in effect, that money is there. But I think that there's enough history on that property out there that I would check the record that the previous gentleman spoke to, if there's something in the city records. And also I would suggest that you check with Davy Engineering out of La Crosse because they may have some records too. Uh, when they did the surveys out there for the township. And Davy's out of La Crosse were the ones that handled that.
George?
You can go back, as Paul just mentioned, and revisit this plan, correct?
Yes.
Could you have something at our next council meeting?
Yes.
So I would just move that we table this issue until our next meeting.
Point of order, we already have a motion on the floor with a second. So, where does that allow, where does that?
The motion, a motion to table or postpone supersedes the same motion.
Supersedes, that's what I think. But we'd need a second for that.
One second.
Okay, now we have a motion and a second to table this, so we'll vote. All those in favor of tabling this, say aye.
Aye.
Vote the same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries six one. This will come back, uh, next meeting.
Item five point four is to renew the Safe Ride Agreement with Winona State and St. Mary's.
I'd second that.
Paul, seconded by Pam, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote the same sign. Carries.
Item five point five is the Chapter sixty-eight Stormwater Management Ordinance Update.
I'd move to introduce the ordinance. I would second that.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by Pam. Discussion?
Uh, now, I have some questions. Um, on page three, um, this is more for my edification as a legal definition. It talks about illicit versus illegal discharge. And my question is, what's the difference between illicit and illegal? As it relates to this particular modification of our stormwater management.
Definitely a question for Chris.
Uh, having had no part in developing this ordinance, it's a little bit, uh, you know, uh, so.
Sorry, you're on the spot here.
You know, I, I'm not sure, Al, because I think what I'm gonna have to go with on this. Um, you know, these are terms of art that are used with stormwater type ordinances. And there are terms that have been, that have come through the Bush Control Agency and they're, they have a MS four permitting process.
Right.
The city of Winona is part of the statewide MS four permit. And so this is part of the compliance with the MS four permit. And so these ordinance changes are for that particular purpose. I know that doesn't answer your question, but that's about all.
It's, it's, you know, it's, it's sort of housekeeping, but it's not. It's more narrowly defining apparently what, what probably they, uh, they need to have in, in our particular situation here. Because, you know, if you look at that, it talks about illicit connections. And then in the, the subparagraph A, it talks about an illegal discharge. So, you know, I mean, I'm just interested in clarification to make sure that everybody understands, you know, what those kinds of things are. Uh, but, uh, I guess it's a minor point in my own particular interest, uh, and all of that, but, uh, I appreciate your, your comments.
Sorry about that.
No, it's okay.
Keith, there's a lot of material here. You, would you summarize this?
Oh, I have more comments too, after that.
I always hope nobody asks for a summary of this. But yes, it's basically like, like attorney Chris says, that this is to handle all the stormwater runoff. And I did highlight, just in case somebody asked me that, just, it's in here. Purpose, this chapter is to control or eliminate stormwater pollution, soil erosion, and sedimentation within the city. This chapter establishes standards and specifications for erosion and sediment control and stormwater management, which minimize stormwater flow rates and pollution, soil erosion and sedimentation, flooding and prohibit illicit connections and illegal discharges to the stormwater management system. That's the purpose of the whole ordinance. What's happening a lot in this one is it's being much more specific on the illicit connections or this discharge, whichever one it is. It's been more specific on that of what those are, defining those, and then into what the, uh, the penalties or ramifications if somebody does that. In the past, it was kind of left up to staff, is this permitted or not permitted? And then what are we gonna do about it? This gets very specific on what the fines are, what the prohibitions are, and what we can do about it.
Okay, thank you.
Now? As long as you're up here, Keith, on page seventeen, um, on, on, item four prohibiting or prohibition of illicit connections, uh, subparagraph B, it talks about, and this was in the earlier city ordinance that we have, but this is the additions that apparently we're making. Uh, it expressly includes without limitation illicit connections made in the past, regardless of whether the connection was permissible under law or practices applicable or prevailing at the time of the connection. Now, if, if, say, a, a commercial building in the downtown area, and, and there are a few, have connections to our stormwater system directly from their, their drainage system, does this require them then to remove those connections?
We would allow stormwater off the roof to go directly into the storm sewer system, no problem.
Because it is water, right.
It is water. But if there's sewer system tied directly into our stormwater, no, they can't do that.
Yeah.
Historically, it was legal to dump oil and fracking down.
Well, yeah, we know that. There's a few of those around here.
Yeah, I think also that, uh.
Okay. And, and then on page twenty-two, as I've gone through this, um, it talks about good housekeeping provisions. And where this, it discourages people from, in residential situations, from, say, washing their driveways down to, to kind of rinse them off. Um, where does this, does this change that issue or not?
I think the one you're referring to here refers specifically to commercial and industrial property.
No, this is, this is, uh, any owner or occupant of property within the city shall comply. Um, and runoff water from residential property, this is item two on that subsection C. Uh, runoff water from washing down a paved areas, well, yeah, okay, okay, you're right. Okay. Just wanted to clarify that it, it's mainly commercial, not, not residential, because some people do that. You know, they rinse their driveways off and.
There's minor things, like if somebody's gonna wash the car, you would prefer to do it in the, in the yard.
Well, exactly, exactly. Okay, I'm, I'm done. I know Jerry has some questions and like Pam has some questions as well.
Pam, did you?
No, I thought, don't.
I thought you raised your hand. Sorry, Jerry.
No, just put my hand up.
I do, I do, Keith, yes. I'm, I'm interested in the illegal disposals now. I'm interested in, I'd like to know if some of these provisions, are these new? So on page fifteen, we're talking about, uh, no person shall deposit, uh, anything so that it, that it gets into the, uh, let's see. No person shall intentionally dispose of leaves, dirt, or other landscape debris into a road, street, alley, et cetera. So is this new or is, has this, it is underlined, so I took it to be new. But I thought that was always illegal.
Yeah, that's, that's written new here, but you're correct. I mean, you could not do that in the past either. Could not put leaves and such into the street.
Okay.
And into the storm sewer. This does not change that.
Okay, and I have another question about whether something is new. So it sounds like maybe things have been underlined here, but they're not really new.
I think it just comes from a different section that's been deleted somewhere else.
I think you've changed the definition from illegal to illicit.
No, it's sometimes hinges on a word, I know. Uh, like just the, the other issue I had was on page twenty-nine where it was talking about, uh, the need for, uh, to incorporate that people should be encouraged to incorporate the use of natural topography and land cover such as wetlands, ponds, natural soils, a, as they exist before development to the degree that they can accommodate an additional flow of water. So is that encouragement, this is new coming up in this legislation? So that people are encouraged to hold the water on their, on their own property instead of?
That's not new. That's, we've been being encouraged to get in the past. And as you've seen here, these, these are, this whole section is not new. We prefer if they do it in a ditch before it gets to a pond. The pond is our last choice because they fill up and sometimes they get kind of junky. We would have seen infiltration happen first, but the pond is also an acceptable option. But yes, we encourage it to have it on their, their property.
We should encourage people not to cut their lawns and we should encourage them not, and then they would save gas and the environment from carbon uh, for their lawn mowers and, and it would slow the flow we do down.
Thank you, Keith.
Eliminate and gain forty hours a year. Any other comments or questions? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote the same sign.
Item five point six is the Job Classification and Compensation Study Implementation.
I'd make a motion to approve the attached resolution.
Pass. Motion by Michelle and seconded by Paul. Discussion?
Well, I, I just have a comment. I think that, that we've, we've worked on this and, and we, we've studied it, at least I have and I'm sure members of council as well. I mean, it's, it moves us forward in, in the compensation arena. Uh, the, the provision that, that I think is, is, uh, beneficial to our, our citizens and our taxpayers, uh, in compensation is the, um, deletion of the longevity benefits. I, I want to highlight that. Uh, however, in doing that, um, the city has taken a very proactive approach to providing compensation and to addressing issues with employees that, uh, previously were granted longevities that, uh, will I think be beneficial to, to those employees in the long run.
Okay. I, I know a lot of cities are moving away from the longevity and moving to a similar system to what we're talking about here tonight. I want to thank the, the staff in particular and the people involved in this. It's been a, I've been a close observer of this and it's been a lot of work, a lot of work to get to this point. So, thank you to everybody that's worked on this. George?
Thank you. Judy, do you want to highlight anything on this or any comments? And you were very much involved with it.
Um, I think the, um, the piece we're, we're looking at tonight, I think, tells us that we've completed the classification portion of this, which is the job, all new job descriptions have been written for every position within the city. They're all consistent, they're all worded properly, they all contain the same information. Um, I think that's a great upgrade from what we've had. And that gets us to the next piece, which is what we're asking you to approve tonight, which is the compensation portion of the plan. Um, and now we get on a basis where everybody's being treated equally, they're being placed in the system properly and then can work through this, the compensation system. And I think it's a good place for us to be finally.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote the same sign. Pass.
Item five point seven is the two thousand sixteen Non-Union Wages and Benefits.
I'd make a motion to approve the non-union placement in the city of Winona base pay structure starting January twenty sixteen.
Second. Motion by Michelle and seconded by Paul. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote the same sign. Carries.
Item seven point one is council concerns.
We serve with Paul tonight.
Uh, I, I want to say, I appreciate the, uh, city attorney, uh, coming back with the recommendations on the statutes with regarding to bike safety. And in particularly, I'd like to highlight three of those things, um, that are in that, uh, state statute. One is that a bicycle must have a light that's visible, uh, for five hundred feet, which is about two city blocks. Um, and, yeah, a rear reflector, which is visible for one hundred feet minimal. And it must have on each side twenty square inches of reflective material, either on the body of the person or the bicycle itself. Uh, and as we get into night and particularly, uh, people who tend to wear dark clothing, it's, it's even more important. Uh, also, I would add that if anyone is making a turn on a bicycle, they need to continuously drive the last hundred feet before the turn signaling. And the last thing is that we have thirty-one blocks in the downtown area that are identified as the, uh, Central Business District. And no bikes are allowed by any person of any age on the sidewalks in that thirty-one block area. And they can find that available online if they just go to Winona, Minnesota Bike Way map. It, it gives a nice map in the, um, statute that defines exactly where that area is. And, uh, or they can call City Hall and, and get the specific boundaries. But, uh, basically it goes from Washington to Franklin and, uh, from roughly Broadway with the exception of a few blocks down to the levee. And, uh, and that means if you're sixteen, it doesn't matter. If you're seventy-two riding a bike, it does not matter. You walk beside your bicycle.
Okay, thank you. Pam?
Uh, well, following up on that topic, I would like to be reminded, please, is there a city committee looking into bicycle safety? Bicycle pathways or bikeways around the city? Do we have a bike committee?
I understand there was a bike committee. I think that's me regularly.
Okay, well, that, then I'm going to take my, my next suggestion to that, that committee. I think that, that maybe we need a city, some kind of a citywide workshop to help people get their bikes in order. So we can find some way of getting them the reflective tape or somehow helping people install this.
Okay, thank you. George?
Thank you. Chief, whatever became of the metal license plate they used to hang on? Chief, whatever became of the metal license plate that used to hang on the back of the seat? How many years ago did those, in fact, you probably weren't born when those went out?
Mayor, Council, those were discontinued before I started here. I remember hearing about them, and I can't remember the date, but I have seen where that was repealed. So, yeah, they, they've been gone quite a while.
Early seventies.
We, yeah.
Seventies.
We, we have a bicycle registration program through our community services officer. There's some flyers around City Hall, and she's brought them around town and put them on our website so people can come in and register their bike information, so that if it turns up being recovered, we can, you know, hopefully locate some of those owners. So it's, it's a little sticker marking that goes on there. Then they bring in the information to us, and they can do it online even. So, similar, but just don't have the little tin plate.
As you can tell, I do not have a bike, so. Thank you, Chief. You know, it's kind of good now going around town and hearing people talking about the Mankato Avenue traffic situation down there, overpasses, underpasses, many different things. People are talking about it, and it's good to hear that kind of talk, which we haven't had for a long, long time. So it's good to, good to hear that conversation out on the street. I would like to welcome Jerry Cordis home. Jerry Cordis was hospitalized for a couple of months, and he returned home here last week, and wish him well as he's on the road to a healthy recovery. And also, I'd like to offer condolences to the Dr. Robert Dufresne family. Dr. Dufresne, who for many years served as president of Winona State College then, and he also had the honor of having a second ward council seat for, for many years back in the seventies. My father had the honor to serve with him for many years on the city council. So, Dr. Dufresne, his accomplishments here with the city, with the university now, you know, just, there, there's a lot of them. So, to his wife, to his wife Barbara, and the rest of the Dufresne family, our condolences on the passing of this very, very influential man. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle?
Yes, I'm wondering if we've made any headway on the bus schedule. I know Paul and I had previously mentioned getting together with the chamber, and I think Jerry weighed in on this, to talk about if there's businesses that could make use of an evening bus route. And I know I've gotten calls from some seniors, maybe that are not able to drive anymore because of their vision, that would like to come downtown for a movie or a meal, but because the bus service ends when it does, they can't get home. And I know part of this is, in, in some way, related to our funding through the state, and I know they don't think we qualify for additional bus service, but I was wondering if, like, we partner with the colleges, there might be a way to partner with some of the businesses. And I know we had originally talked about possibly having a meeting with the chamber or some of the businesses to see if there was possibly a program we could implement where they might help fund a night service. I know, I'm sure you've discovered, but still, there's a problem with people getting to their third shift there and home. And as we're heading towards winter, I'm picturing them on the bikes, and I'm thinking that's probably not the best situation. So I don't know if there's still a possibility for that meeting or if there's been any headway.
Yes, Mayor and Council, we did meet with the chamber several months ago. And I'm not sure where it really ended up, but the, the issue is trying to get more people into Winona to work those evening jobs, and our current transit system serves just within the city of Winona and Goodview. And you're correct, to expand service, if we want to go beyond what the state transit grant is funding, we would need to fund 100% of the cost of those, of that route expansion, whereas currently, the state grant covers 80%. So it would be a pretty significant cost to, to expand those evening hours. And I'll, I'll check again with the chamber to see if they've had any follow-up meetings. Whoa, oh, sorry, Jerry.
I would make a recommendation that in addition to the chamber, invite the workforce investment board. That just expands it a bit further. And I know I would like to be involved in that as well, and I would assume, as would you. It's, we, we fully understand it's only the internal people, but there are internal people that, from the city of Winona, they're the ones that are requesting it, that it's difficult to get to the second and third shift jobs, which we hear advertised daily. And they're hard to fill. We're having all these meetings around the state, especially in southeastern Minnesota, about how to fill these jobs so the companies can expand. And one of the, it's not just housing, it's also transportation for second and third shift. And you're right, it may be cost prohibitive. But as we move forward with that, let's also invite the workforce investment board.
And maybe we can explore what the cost would be for someone to, for us to provide a service at night, what would it cost the user? Just, just so that we have that information. Because I think what we do provide is great, but it would be nice if we could address some of, I mean, it would be nice to fill those jobs and have people be able to get where they need to go, no matter what time of day it is. And I know that it's expensive, but even if we had one bus that could run, it might make a difference.
And if you can't fill a shift and have to shut it down, it's a whole lot more than maybe supporting the cost of running a bus. Yes.
Anything else, Michelle? Jerry?
One thing, if this could be brought back, and I know that engineering is already talking to these folks, but there is a group of concerned neighbors and families in the West End on the Vila and Broadway neighborhood, and I would imagine you've talked to them too, Mr. Mayor. They wanted to know how to bring it forward to the council while they're doing it the right way. So if we could have it, since engineering is already looking at it, what this is, is the, there's the longest stretch of Broadway without a controlled intersection, it's 1.3 miles. That would be the western portion of it, where there's an awful lot of students. And again, there was a recent accident right there on Vila. And Vila's kind of an interesting one, since it's the feeder into the mall, it's got an awful lot of traffic, and so it's a very busy, very congested intersection. So, engineering is looking at it, if that could be brought back for all of us to discuss, and then we'll alert that neighborhood group on when that's going to be.
And the visibility is poor.
Yes, with Carter.
That was one of the places I wanted one of those flashing lights, because I, having driven there, you can just see that for students trying to cross, I mean, the, the Broadway gets so narrow and cars are moving.
They're requesting a four-way, but engineering is looking at it with traffic studies, and it falls into everything we're talking about already with everything else. But if this one could be, you know, and again, engineering's working on it, but if that could be brought back so all of us could talk about it, and then as soon as you know when it's going to be, have somebody let me know, and then I'll let this neighborhood group know about it.
Certainly.
Thank you.
I know Paul has, he called me today, he's got some numbers, I don't know if you want to share that, wait till another, okay, since you do have some information.
Just checking the last two years up to date, in 2014, there was an accident, August 10th, that was a bicycle and car with minor injuries. It got reported to us sometime, a couple days after it happened. And the other accidents in 2014 all happened on the same day. And each one of them were because of the ice and slippery road conditions. We had vehicles slid into a parked car, another one slid through the intersection into Sixth Street, and there was another one that, that struck another car's rear bumper as it was trying to stop. In 2015, counting the accident that you just brought up, there were three total accidents. We had February 26, we had a vehicle that didn't stop for the stop sign traveling north on Vila. May 4th, northbound vehicle pulled out from the stop sign, and there was a collision with a westbound vehicle. And then, of course, the last one, that we're still waiting for the reconstruction person to come back with a speed on, because it appeared to be the big factor there. So, up to date, that's what we had.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Anything else, Jerry? Okay, Al?
I concur with Councilman Borzakowski on sympathy to the Robert Dufresne family, also to a former city employee who has passed away, this is a while ago, but Don Brown passed away, longtime city employee, and, and sympathy to his family. Also, I want to wish my, my Aunt Phyllis Thurlie, who now lives in Florida, she's a longtime Winona resident with my Uncle Fred, many, many years. And she celebrated her 13th birthday yesterday. So I officially want to wish her a very happy birthday. And she, amazing, and I wish I would have inherited her genes, unfortunately, it's my uncle's side of the family, but anyway.
She still live independently?
Pardon?
Does she still live independent?
Uh, assisted living, you know, my, my cousin is there to take care of her needs, but she's, she's, I have a picture, I'll show you after the meeting, Mayor. And I want to wish every, yeah, I want to wish everyone a happy Hanukkah. It's the, the Festival of Lights going on right now. And in conclusion, I think we, as a city and community, need to recognize the fact that this is Pearl Harbor Day. It was 1941, and a very significant event in our country's history and certainly the history of our community. And I was kind of surprised that I, I didn't see really a lot of mention in media today about it. I mean, I think there was, but I think our local media really should have recognized that kind of significantly that a little more. But that's all I have there.
Thank you.
Under the consent agenda, there are two items, approved of the minutes from November 16, and the final adaption of an ordinance for two-hour parking and no parking loading zone on Washington Street.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second that.
Motion's by Al and seconded by Michelle. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Poll the same sign.
Mayor, I move we adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.